Councilwoman Goodman said notice had been transmitted to the carrier news as our legislature on Wednesday, January 9th, 2019, as well as posting on the board of the Boyden City Clerk's office. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmember Armani, here.
Councilwoman Davis.
Present.
Councilman Good.
Present.
Councilman McCray.
Here.
Councilman Sorchas, known with that easily on business this evening. Vice President Hocke, here. Council President Losraces.
Present.
You have six members present in your call.
Please rise to the place of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
May I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Humbly we ask God to give her peace and the love of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all those who work for justice and peace. Amen.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the combined meeting Monday or this fall through the next week?
So moved, Council President.
I have seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any standing? Clerk, I hear any communications from the mayor?
Yes, as honor mayor, if you want to have us made correspondence, see you August 23rd for the vice president Santino Victoria Williams Brown, serves as a member of the House of Control Board.
At this time, the administration would like to speak about redevelopment relevant responsibilities, Mr. Machado.
Thank you, Council President. Momentarily, Director Jackson will speak in a broad sense about the redevelopment process in the city of Williamville. Just like to explain that we will not be discussing any specific matters that are either before the planning board or that could potentially be before the city council at any point. This is done to preserve the integrity of those proceedings. All the proceedings that come before planning board or the city council regarding redevelopment could potentially be subject to review, potentially a judicial review. So to ensure that there is a, if there's one record and that record is preserved before the appropriate body, we will not discuss any specific matters that are currently pending. And to that, in my understanding is that Ms. Jackson will do, the Director Jackson will do the presentation, and there will not be a question answer associated. Thank you, Council.
Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon, or good evening, Council President and Council members. The first thing I want to say is that the law governing redevelopment is the local redevelopment and housing law, and that is statute NJSA 40A:12A. And the law establishes the criteria and procedures for designating areas in need of redevelopment or rehabilitation. So that's kind of the first thing I want to say. And it also defines the roles and responsibilities of the governing body, planning board, and redevelopment entity. In the case of Plainfield, a council is the governing body as well as the redevelopment entity. In certain towns, council has the ability to designate a redevelopment agency, which could be a separate agency. It could be a parking authority, a housing authority, to implement redevelopment. But in this case, council is the redevelopment entity. And it establishes the powers of the redevelopment entity to implement the redevelopment plan and administer redevelopment projects. It describes the contents of the redevelopment plan. It authorizes the use of eminent domain to acquire private property for redevelopment purposes. So the law defines that. It also defines the provisions when you see redevelopment agreements between a city and a designated redeeveler. The law defines that. So that I want to establish upfront. I also believe there is confusion about the redevelopment process, confusion around what is the role of the redevelopment entity versus that of the planning board. And so as we look at the redevelopment process, council has to designate an area in need of redevelopment or rehabilitation. And what council usually does is authorize the planning board to investigate, and then the planners put together the studies that are reviewed by the planning board. Council also, as the redevelopment entity, adopts the redevelopment plan. And that is done by ordinance and requires two readings. And so it becomes the legal zoning, the law for that particular geography. Then we execute redevelopment agreements with one or more redevelopers in a redevelopment area. That is the role of council as well, is to execute those redevelopment agreements. The city cooperates with the redevelopers in their efforts to redevelop the area. And that may include exercising the power of eminent domain. So that is one of the tools that is available to the redevelopment entity to facilitate the redevelopment of a specific parcel or multiple parcels. So that is the redevelopment process. So what is the role of city council? It authorizes the preliminary investigation by resolution. That's the study that directs the planning board to investigate an area. They designate by resolution the redevelopment area. So if the planning board comes back and says, "We recommend that this is an area in need of redevelopment," it gets presented to council, and then council adopts that area as a redevelopment area. And then, as a result of that action, the council is directing the planning board to create a redevelopment plan. And so the planners begin to create that redevelopment plan. The planning board recommends that to council, and council adopts the redevelopment plan by ordinance. And then developers, as I said, enter into redevelopment agreements with the city, which is authorized by resolution. And then council assists the redevelopment entity and the redeeveler in implementing the redevelopment plan. They ensure that the redevelopment project that's undertaken is in accordance with the redevelopment plan and redevelopment agreement, which may include conveying city-owned property to the redeeveler through sale or lease, or the acquisition of property through eminent domain to then convey to a developer. So this is all defined by the state statute in terms of that role. The role of the planning board is limited in that they are to review the area in need to determine if it is blighted. There is specific criteria according to the law by which they evaluate properties in terms of blight. That is the only role that the planning board has in a study area. So they don't get into condemnation versus non-competition. They're only looking at the property as whether it is blighted or in need of redevelopment. And eminent domain, well, let me go back to the redevelopment plan. So once a redevelopment plan is adopted and council adopts that redevelopment plan, the role of the planning board is very simple. It is any site plan that comes before them in that redevelopment area, they have to ensure that it meets the terms of the redevelopment plan. That's the only role they have. So if we permit convenience store in the area and somebody wants to put a convenience store in, the only role that the planning board has is to ensure that the use is permitted by the redevelopment plan and that it meets the requirements and standards of the redevelopment plan. The use of eminent domain, and normally it is used only after good faith efforts by a redeeveler to acquire private property through negotiation has failed. So when that negotiation fails, then eminent domain is one of the solutions. Often used in connection, is often used in connection with easement or other property interests as well. And just because a property is acquired through eminent domain does not mean, necessarily mean that a structure will be demolished. So when we say it's a condemnation area, it doesn't mean that the property is necessarily going to be demolished. What it means is that to facilitate the development, in this case, city council may elect to use eminent domain as a tool to make that happen. In addition, well, that's it on the eminent domain. But I wanted to clarify, because people are showing up at the planning board confused about what the planning board role is, and I just want to clarify the redevelopment process. And so it's a very structured, legal process that we abide by. And we have not only corporation council advising us as it relates to these redevelopments, but we have a council that specializes in redevelopment and redevelopment law, and who have done this throughout the state. So rest assured that we are following the procedures and the requirements of the law. Thank you.
Clerk, please read NC 2019-22 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
NC 2019-22 is an ordinance establishing chapter nine with permits and regulated activities, article twenty-three, twenty-four, arts, culture, and education center, establishing a free schedule that is applicable to the city of Plainfield, Jersey, 2019-71. hereby certified, notice of public hearing on this ordinance published in the Hurry News on August 21st, 2019.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. Seeing no one come forward, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by the law.
Moved.
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmember Armani? Yes. Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hocke?
Yes.
Council President Losraces?
Yes.
That is unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Clerk, please read NC 2019-23 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
NC 2019-23 is an ordinance to amend chapter six, building article two, property needs, lending registration requirements, letting registration fee on owners and creditors of registerable properties. hereby certified, notice of public hearing on this ordinance published in the Hurry News on August 21st, 2019.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. Seeing no one approaching the mic, may I have a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
Moved.
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmember Armani? Yes. Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hocke?
Yes.
Council President Losraces?
Yes.
That is unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Clerk, please read NC 2019-24 by title and further certify that the ordinance has completed all statutory publication requirements.
Ordinance NC 2019-24 is an ordinance to amend chapter nine with permits and regulated activities, grading, lending, article twenty-one from the American Card. hereby certified, notice of public hearing on this ordinance published in the Hurry News on August 21st, 2019.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. Seeing no one approaching the mic, may I have a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
Moved.
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmember Armani? Yes. Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hocke?
Yes.
Council President Losraces?
Yes.
That is unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
A total of thirty minutes has been allocated for public comments limited to resolutions and ordinances being considered this evening. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes. The floor is now open. Seeing no one approaching the mic, may I have a motion to close public comments?
So be it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments are now closed. Clerk, will you please read the consent agenda this evening?
That's my president. Consent agenda is unidentified, its resolutions R272 through R275-19, R277 through R282-19, R286 through R287-19, and R290 and 292-19.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Moved.
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Roll call on the consent agenda. Councilmembers Armani? Yes. Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hocke?
Yes.
Council President Losraces?
Yes.
Consent agenda is not approved.
Clerk, will you please read the remaining resolutions?
Yes, we have resolution R276-19, which is authorizing approval to conduct an outdoor festival.
May I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any standing?
Resolution R2E319 authorizing the award of a contract to top line construction.
May I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any standing?
Resolution R2E419 authorizing the award of contract for land and access for restoration.
May I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any standing?
Resolution R2E519 authorizing application for the destruction of drainage facilities at Brookside Place.
May I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any standing?
Resolution R2E19 amending resolution 1E219 and resolution 1E119 awarding a professional services contract to senior associates and issuing group.
May I have a motion to approve?
So be it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any standing?
Resolution R2E919 directing the planning boards to review the previously adopted redevelopment plan for possible matters.
May I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? May I have a motion to add R29, resolution 293-19 to the agenda for consideration?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Council President, 293 is going to have to be changed and now we have to adopt. So move for consideration.
I mean, repeat that, clerk.
Just the motion to approve 293 now is not.
I thought you went to reading. Okay. May I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any standing? We now have two ordinances on first reading. Clerk, would you please read ordinance NC 2019-25 by title?
Resolution, I'm sorry, ordinance NC 2019-25 is an ordinance establishing and amending the schedule of salaries and wages without pursuant to chapter ten, article fourteen, within this accordance in Plainfield, Jersey, to include for the coordinator's office numbers.
Are there any questions from the council?
Yes, Council President, I was just waiting for the numbers to compare to other municipalities. I never received them from last week's.
Yes, unfortunately, Council President, we did provide certain comparison data. Council asked for additional comparison in this town, which we do not have this evening. We only provided Scotch Plains, Franklin Township, Arbor Township, and Atlanta Heights.
Great, that was great, that was great. Did you want, were there, Council, what did they look?
Uh, yes, I was wondering about other municipalities that we usually compare to, such as like Newark and Urbington. It just seems like those municipalities, when we look at comparisons, we don't always choose those. So I was just looking for other municipalities that we usually compare to.
Yeah, apologize, Council, I do not have Newark or Urbington's salary actually available, I don't have.
Right, do they even have a person?
Uh, I would assume so. I remember Miss White has an OEM coordinator. But their salary, obviously, I would think Newark, being that's much larger city in the state, or like greater than Plainfield and Urbington as well, but I certainly, I do not have that information.
All right. Any other questions from the council?
Um, so while we're looking at, I guess, several other municipalities, is it just size that we're looking for? Or I just, you know, I don't know, let's see.
Where do we draw our data from?
Or in terms of population, are we looking for, you know, municipalities similar in size or?
Well, honestly, the, 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 the motivator in looking to address the salary for the OEM coordinator is just the increased workload here in the city of Plainfield. It wasn't driven, we obviously looked at other municipalities to make sure it was reasonable, but hearing that Scotch Plains are a neighboring municipality, which is small in size, had OEM quarter being $20,000, we thought that ours was not in line. And just based on the fact that storms are coming at greater frequency, stronger, damage is greater, our need for our OEM coordinator, where years past could have been, once a year maybe, has become much more necessary. It's become more, a position that requires greater responsibility. So we were driven more by the need for a, the need to make it sound or convince her with the responsibility here in Plainfield, without the control of us. We don't think it's unreasonable, given municipalities that we were able to hold events last year.
Council President, if I may, I don't think it's unreasonable. I was just interested, because when we do comparisons, it just seems like those towns aren't the towns we usually compare to. So I don't, I don't think it's a thing, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask, especially with the increased workload, but just making sure that the comparisons were consistent. Because when we look at other things, you look at other municipalities. So, yeah, I was just interested in seeing some of those.
Thank you.
Um, so, Mr. Machado, just for clarification purposes, Franklin Township has a population of 66,000. Would you ever go to share what they pay theirs?
Fifteen thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I will now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So be it.
Is there a second? Roll call.
Councilmember Armani? Yes. Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hocke?
Yes.
Council President Losraces?
Yes.
So this has been adopted on first reading.
Clerk, will you please read bond ordinance 1268 by title?
Yes, bond ordinance 1268. Bond ordinance providing for various capital acquisitions and improvements for the police department buying in the city of Plainfield and the county of Union, state of Jersey. Reappropriating $365,000 in excess bonds proceeds from various bond ordinances not needed for their original purpose to finance the cost of the repelling bond ordinance number 1263, which was adopted on February 12th, 2018.
Are there any questions from the council?
Can the police director or director of action describe how the money is being used?
There were three, it covers everything from police vehicles, the HVAC system is a big one. So that's the biggest one, you know, on that hurdle list is to fix the air conditioning. There have been nothing but air conditioning problems for the last six or eight months in this building. So, you know, that's one of the biggest initiatives. There's also an initiative to fix some additional bathrooms here in this building. They're all related to, you know, solutions here within the police department.
So relatively new here, but how often do we have excess bond proceeds that we can spend?
This is at least the third time that I've been before this body with regard to money that was unspent and was no longer needed. The reason that there was money here, the biggest contributor was when we did the technology upgrade for the police, you know, department, we were able to get prices for equipment and all that were $300,000, $360,000 less than what we had been advised to expect. You know, so we then turned around and wanted to reuse that money to bring about additional improvements within the police department.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I will now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So be it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Armani? Yes. Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hocke?
Yes.
Council President Losraces?
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
General comments? A total of sixty minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk for the record. The amount of time, any single speaker is allowed, we look at to five minutes. The floor is now open.
Johnny Perchard, formerly of 723 Arms out of Plainfield, now 410 Spur Center of Arbor. Two days from today, we'll have the 18th anniversary of 9/11. We need to back our soldiers, sailors, Marines, Coast Guards, and Navy as they do their best to defend our nation against any more acts of terrorism, both at home and abroad. We need to back our police officers and firefighters. Let's not forget that 343 firefighters of the FDNY lost their lives on that day. Twenty-three New York City police officers, thirty-seven corps authority police officers, not to mention many private citizens were lost too. Military personnel were lost in the attack on the Pentagon, about sixty military personnel. We need to back them up. And we need to back them up fully. We failed to defend our own Vietnam, we lost sixteen men from Plainfield who lost their lives fighting for us in Vietnam. When, when our men came back, they were called Nazis, murderers, and baby killers. I'd like to see the word Nazi retired once and for all. It's just as bad as early in war, which of course I will not, I repeat, will not use. The poor British soldier in there despise. Nor count him as a stranger. Remember, he's his country's stay and day and not our danger. And secondly, we need to act like Mullenberg. We need that hospital, we need that family, we need that ASAP. One minute long before the attack occurs. We're talking on many people's lives. Let's not forget that. The sooner act like Mullenberg got better off with our. The sooner act like Mullenberg got better off, we'd all would be, go into some clear.
Mary Bromickel, seventeen eighty-five, sleepy, all alone, good evening, everyone. I, I thank you for that description of the planning process, of the eminent domain process, however, I'm not sure that citizens are confused on the role of the planning board so much as they're groping for a public forum to tell the administration how they feel. Condemnation is done with taxpayer funds from large numbers of centrally located lots are possible candidates for eminent domain, it can raise concern among the taxpayers. All of you work for the taxpayers, and we are concerned about what the administration will put on these lots. You work for us, and recognition can be in short supply in this administration on that. Thank you.
Nancy Few, eleven-twenty-nine, we're allowed to. I bring to you tonight an issue that is happening across the country, and you may or may not be aware of it, but it's the Byron Allen case, I don't know if you've heard about it, but Byron Allen is fighting a law case, I'll just read a little bit. The Trump administration has become friendlier with the nation's media giant, cable giant in August when Solicitor General Noel Francisco filed a brief before the United States Supreme Court supporting Comcast, and Comcast is in our community, in a highly contentious twenty billion dollar civil rights case. Hollywood businessman and comedian Byron Allen, who is an African American, he owns the Weather Channel, claims in a suit that Comcast discriminated against him by refusing to carry his cable channels, a case which is supposed to be heard before the Supreme Court November thirteenth. That, you wonder why I even bring this up. I've defended many people before ELC for their jobs. The, the, the Justice Department is now fighting against eighteen sixty-six Civil Rights Act that protected African Americans and minorities of business, and if, if they, they succeed in this case, we're all going to be in trouble, because it's going to have, it's going to make it harder for anyone to bring civil rights cases, several legal experts warn. A Comcast win could have also cascaded to everyday Americans' lives, changing how race could affect lawsuits involving rents, jobs, and education, and all minorities, and it's attracting a lot of attention across the country. A few of us are considering doing a, a support for the Byron Allen case over on city-owned property, I will go to the city, city clerk's office and see what has to be done in order to do that, but we would like to hopefully gather some support because it needs to be talked about. New Jer, New Jersey's in the market between Philadelphia and New York, we hardly get any cable news from anybody. I heard yesterday that FiOS is leaving, okay, FiOS one is leaving, so, the only people that are going to have access to any local news, cable news, is, is News Twelve, and it's a real concern because the city has always stood up for civil rights. The Urban League in, in LA has stood up against it, their call for boycott, Mr. Allen does not want a boycott, he just wants to be treated fairly, and he's doing this to try to help the rest of us. Yes, he has a lot of money, but he's trying to do the right thing, and I would hope that the city council will take a look at it and maybe give him some support, and if we do get a sign-in, legal spirituals, because you got to call on the higher power to help us in these times of trouble, but it's real significant that the Justice Department is now going to fight against civil rights, and we had a man in this town that did the civil rights law in nineteen sixty-four, he lived on Prospect Avenue, he worked for Lyndon Johnson, and he gave us some civil rights, and I think it's really a disservice to the community and everybody in this town, that if this happens November thirteenth, a lot of us are going to be in trouble, and I have this for the city council to make you aware of what's going on in the mayor, so whatever support you can give must be appreciated.
Good evening, Council President, Council members, my name is James Branch, formerly of creating Brooklyn Street, Plainfield, New Jersey. Tonight, there's a lot of issues that went on, and one of the things we're dealing with the Office of Emergency Management, and the reality of the situation, and it's a sad situation, that our whole society went into a negative state as far as a positive state as far as dealing with our health, of our relationship, and our spiritual foundation. For many years, I've been in conflict with what's going on with the city of Plainfield, or with some work that I did as far as the emergency situation that went on with your computer system. Right now, that issue is not really resolved, because the ethics as far as what's going on with the infrastructure, the internet, is still on the table. So, I just want to say briefly, we hope that the city, and you got to realize that the Office of Emergency Management is not just limited to the city of Plainfield, but, you know, more or less more with New York as well, and, you know, today there's an article in the New York Times where they're going to restructure the political situation and the problems that goes on with New York as well. Most of the work that I've been doing in New York has been considered classified, because dealing with accountability and money and a few other things, and right now, as we go through what's going to happen with technology, this role within our society, we have to find plain dishonesty, and as far as the relationships between the city and the citizens, it's too poor. So, we have some projects that later we want to introduce to the city, you know, because it is my hometown, I have three generations of family members that worked for the council, was on the council, and worked in Plainfield, and they treat unfairly because they want to find out what is the legal statute for computer usage in the general population is a problem. So, right now, I'm looking at restoring my life and my role as president of computer technology, and we need to have my problem with the city of Plainfield resolved. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Sam Sekita Cooper, Brooklyn Boulevard, Plainfield, New Jersey. I want to first thank Councilman Armani, Good, and Hockley for coming through to PAZ last week, for taking time out to recognize, welcome the children back to school, I really appreciated that, and so did the children, the smiles, the administrators, we really appreciate that, so thank you so much, I really appreciate that. For those that don't know, PAZ is what I consider one of the gems of Plainfield, it marked its tenth anniversary last week. There was nothing about it anywhere, and I'm hoping that all of you get together and think about what we can do to recognize our gifted and talented public high school in Plainfield. So, that is extremely important, because that is one of the positive things that we have here in the city, and we are not showcasing that, so if we could all work together and come up with a resolution for that, I'd appreciate it. I'm also asking that you look into, I've asked this before in reference to the Division of Inspections. When home buyers come in, there's a process that they go through, you can get a temporary certificate of compliance, you pay five hundred dollars, you get the option to close, you get to move in as long as there's nothing serious, you can have those violations evaded, the inspector comes back, once the inspector clears all of those violations, he comes back to the city. Well, unless the homeowner comes down to the Division of Inspections and says, hey, I want my refund, nothing will happen. The homeowner should not have to make that extra step. If the inspector has already cleared that violation list, the wheels should be turning at that point for that homeowner to receive their money. The way it is now, the Division of Inspection specifically requests that that homeowner prove and provide that they gave five hundred dollars in order to get that certificate, and that should not be the way, and I, this is my second time now coming before you to ask that you look into that. It's a disservice to the home buyer, and it's something that shouldn't be continuing to take place when everything has already been done. It's going to take four to six weeks for you to even get the money back, because there's a resolution that has to come here for the money to be returned, so if we could look into that, I would appreciate it. PMUA, as a homeowner, and a lot of homeowners don't know this, when you purchase a home in Plainfield, nine out of ten times, you have to come to the city of Plainfield and apply, do your paperwork. That paperwork is completed, inspections are done, you know that I bought the house. PMUA does not know that I bought the house. Months go by, the records have not been updated, you go down to PMUA, maybe you need a garbage can, or you need to get a dumpster, and PMUA is still looking at the previous owner's information. However, in the event that you are behind in your sewer bill, PMUA sends a notice to the city of Plainfield, and those charges are included in the tax sale. I'm asking that someone look into maybe running a report once a month, and providing that to PMUA to update their records, so that when I, the homeowner, calls down to get services, I then don't have to look for my deed to then supply to PMUA to get services done. So, that's something that I'm hoping that we could look into, since we, Plainfield, the homeowners, did not ask for PMUA. Lastly, I had a little situation down at the fire department. We used to be able to provide checks. There was some back and forth, yes, you can provide a personal check, no, you cannot. There was an issue that came about based on a previous person that is now retired just recently, where, let's just say there were some inefficiencies that occurred. After my visit to the fire department, there were some other people that came through, and they were allowed to write a check. I'm not going to call those people out, you all can open that information if you would like to, and I don't think it's in good taste to do so for me to out those people who were able to provide personal checks or given special attention. As a Realtor in this town, I should not be looked upon or lumped in as a negative for bringing business into the town and keeping business in this town. There should be a way for us to either provide a check, do something electronically, or at a minimum, have better customer service when I come to that counter. I am one person, but there are many of me that have had an experience that wasn't what Plainfield is about. So, I'm asking that as a community, as a council, that we remember that there are people who are coming to this town, they are looking to do business, there are people who have stayed here that are continuing to purchase homes, additional homes, we're here, we'd like a little bit of respect, I'm sorry. Am I done? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Two of them, of the council level, just saying, do the resolution for ten years, get some information.
Thank you.
Give us some information on PAZ, we'll do the resolution for next month, you can also come back next month, the EMUA will be here doing presentation.
Thank you.
Okay.
Timothy Priano Martine Avenue. Oh, where a year ago, we were supposed to get an app to report illegal dumping. This week, I was so confused on what we were supposed to be doing, so I called Stell, you know, the curve where the trees are, between the high school and Kenyon, that's a favorite dumping spot, so I called DPW, they were telling me now I have to call inspections to report that we have illegal dumping. Before it was, they told me to call the police department to tell them that there was illegal dumping. Wherever the curve is, because I drive it every day to go to work, huge garbage bags, it's been there for a week, I called, and then today on Monday, I called again saying, the curb is still there, and now somebody's adding more junk to the street, because you see one pile, they go to the next pile, but we were supposed to have some sort of service set last year that we were going to be able to just call one number and get it done. I don't know what happened with that, I mean, is it still in the works, will we see it someday that we know who to call in the city to make this problem resolve, because it's a lot. My second problem is the wires that are hanging off the streets. We have to be able to get these cable companies, the telephone companies, if you go down any street in the city, you'll see five or six poles wrapped with wires all the way around it from the last storm, but the utility companies never come back to putting up their wires, they're hanging low in the streets, you know, I'm not saying the kids are hanging on them, but, you know, they could use that, they could run into the street, somebody could trip over the stuff, and then we have a lawsuit if they're tripping on it, but the wires, you should see, they're just hanging everywhere, there's a huge box at the corner of Belvedere and Watchon, and it's just like a five-foot box that just hangs suspended up there, it's like, why is this is not secure? Because if, in case we get a big storm, that's going somewhere, and I hope it's not on top of a car like that guy in Westfield today was reported that the city's being sued because a tree fell on top of him, who cut the roots, who did cut the roots, but these are preventative matters that we should look into. Thank you.
Nicole, good evening. Nicole McGolden, thirteen sixty-six, Saint Edward's Boulevard. So, I wanted to address the council about the four-way stop signs. Most recently, in my experience, the last one that went in, well, one of the last ones that went in, was the four-way stop at Leland and George Street. That intersection has been for many, many years in dire need of some type of traffic control. However, I don't think that the four-way stop is working very well at that location. It's been many, many months, and the traffic that's traveling on Leland Avenue has a tendency to, if they do stop, they feel as though they still have the right of way, so therefore they continue to go through the stop sign and not allow the tra, the traffic on George Street to go through, so it's not really working as a four-way stop. I think part of the problem with it is that entire street, all the intersections that have some type of traffic control are controlled by a traffic light, and then you get to this one that's a four-way stop, and the signage is not very clear. I've noticed with the four-way stops throughout the city, that the signage is not uniform. Some of them have a light-up sign on all four corners, with a sign that says it's a four-way stop, some only have the light-up sign on two of the corners, and I think it makes it more confusing for the drivers when they're trying to navigate through these intersections. So, if someone could please take a look at that, I don't know if you have any traffic studies that have been done, but if you do, if you could please take another look at that, because I don't think that four-way stop there is working very well. The second thing is, some years ago, the county redid all the intersections on Terrell Road. They did paving, they did new lights, they repainted the, the lanes, and they changed some of the traffic patterns. The intersection at Front and Terrell, on the Plainfield side of the intersection, has undergone a number of traffic pattern changes. Initially, it was a left-turn-only lane and straight and right. When everything was redone, it became left turn and straight, right turn only, then that was wiped out, and now there's nothing there. I inquired to the county as to why the strapping was not redone for that side of the intersection, because drivers know there's supposed to be two lanes, but they don't know which direction the traffic is supposed to go in each lane, and I was told by the county that the decision was made by a Plainfield traffic engineer to take the lineage out there, so that that no longer represents two lanes. That is the only side of every intersection on that entire stretch of Terrell Road that does not have any lane indications as to which way the traffic is supposed to travel. So, if we could revisit that also, it would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Council President, if I may request, again, maybe having some type of infograph for the four-way stop signs, just so people know who should be stopping there, because that is also a problem I see at that same intersection, that nobody knows who should be stopping, or who should be going first, if we can have some type of infograph or communications to just inform residents of how four-way stops. how four-way stop signs work.
Council President, I also requested that.
I'm sorry, just wanted to respond here. And you can, you can come in as you want to. This isn't a true, this isn't a thing, it's, it's true.
At the last meeting, it was asked to request a presentation in regards to the four-way stops. We're working on that presentation as I speak. We're getting the data, the information to see if they are helping or not helping based on the last meeting, so that there was accidents that were occurring more often. So I'm working on that area. Also, along with the presentation is going to be, because I really believe it's a, a more knowledge on how to stop is what's needed. I mean, that's going to be a part of the presentation, and I'm also looking to have whatever that is that we find to be put on our city website as well to raise knowledge. I've looked around other cities that have been using four-way stop signs for years, and there, there's no problem. I think it's just the, and that means with those cities, there's no problem because that's what they're used to. So I think it's just a matter of just trying to educate the community on how to use them. Now, there may be some that we have to evaluate. Leland Avenue is one that we were looking at along with Rock Avenue. But for the most part, the rest of them seems to be working. But I will, I'm trying my best to have it for next month's meeting. The data just takes a little longer to get because we have, I believe, there's sixteen. So we're trying to get the data for all of them as soon as we can. But we will work on that.
Council President?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. One clarification for the record. The use of eminent domain is required in redevelopment areas will not be funded by the city. So that's a clarification for the record, that taxpayers will not be funding the use of eminent domain to facilitate redevelopment. Thank you.
Oh, okay. I thought the four-way stops.
I just want to close that one out before we close that.
Okay. I don't blame you for that one. Thank you for the report that's coming. Four-way stops, basically, the ones that came before your current family with Director Allen, who, who became Director, were basically requested by the residents.
Yes.
That was the thing. And those that are in the area where I am in Third Ward, they're working very well. And there's a thing about the first person against there is the first person goes. If you get there at the same time, I mean, they guys know they learned and used it well and the right goes.
That's what I learned. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. So, yeah, I just wanted to add.
Exactly. And that is the thing too, that in going backwards to see how we obtained four-way stop signs, it was a concern of the residents. It was something that was brought because of the complaints that we're getting, speeding and things like that. So, you know, this is very hard, and I just really believe education on how to use them is what's going to help.
Just a follow-up. So Director Burges, would it be possible to take a look at Front Street and Terrell Road?
Oh, that's not a four-way stop.
No, no, no. In terms of the lines. I don't know if that's our jurisdiction or the county.
Yes, I've already written that down as something I'm looking to.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll, I'm sorry, we'll look at that. From a engineering standpoint, we'll look at that, okay? That's where it comes.
Did you have something to say, Councilman?
Nobody was already told. Thank you, Director Burges.
Joanne Mateluso, Cushing Road. I'm very concerned about the condemnation of buildings and the eminent domain, taken by eminent domain. And now I hear the city isn't funding, so does the city have any say in what the redevelopment is? A lot of those buildings are older buildings, and I really love the, the historic view of Plainfield, and I don't want it to become a shopping mall.
I did remarks earlier on it. I'll see you after the meeting, and I'll explain it to you. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one else coming to the mic, we have a motion to close General Covenants.
So move.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentees? Okay. Before I go to vagina, I would, I know, I'm over there. Okay. I, I know, I'm gonna let you do that. All right, we're talking. I'm gonna let the chief operator at the city introduce the chief operator of schools.
Well, good evening, Council President and members of the community, residents. We have in the audience just even our new superintendent of schools, Dr. Diana Mitchell. And I think it would be good for you to know who she is. And so, Council President, with your permission, if Dr. Mitchell wants to say hello to the residents, I think that would be a good thing.
Well, I have no problem with that, Mr. Mayor. So, Dr. Mitchell, if you'd like to come to the mic and also let you introduce Mr. Williams.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. Thank you for letting me have two minutes. My name is Diane Mitchell, and I am just honored to be the superintendent here in Plainfield. Next month, we will be launching a new tool called Less Talk so we can have better accountability with our constituents, and it will be connected to every school principal and every department. We're also launching Board Dogs so that every member of the Plainfield community will be able to log onto our sites and look at our minutes, our notes, our bids, everything, so that you don't know what's going on with our school system. On my meet and greet, I asked for champions to come and support our schools. Thank you for coming on the first day of school. I had approximately five people to sign up to be a champion, and I wish I had my sheet with me. So if you can do anything to support our schools, to serve as a mentor, to come outside and stand up in the morning time and make sure our students are safe, please come out and support our schools because we need your help. Mr. Williams?
Good evening. My name is Mark Williams. I'm the acting assistant superintendent of schools here in Plainfield. Been here for thirteen years, also a resident for the last eight. It's been a pleasure to serve in this capacity thus far. We have a lot of exciting things planned for Plainfield to improve the quality of our education. So during the coming year, our goals are building leader and teacher capacity as well as improving the climate and culture of our buildings. Also, one of the things that, you know, long-range plans that we have is to build our five-year strategic plan in the spring. So looking forward to working with you. Please come out and support. Looking forward to collaborating. I love this city. So, and that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you, madam.
Council President, I think it's refreshing to see the superintendent and her assistant at a Plainfield City Council meeting. I don't recall ever seeing a superintendent at one of our meetings.
Okay. You have your head. Okay, so, can I have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
A second? All in favor?